We're going to open the February 20 meeting
I know.
of the East Long Meadow Planning Board. And I have to announce that under the open meeting law that we are recording this LCAT. We are taking notes but not recording it for the minutes. I guess if anyone else is recording the meeting. Hearing none, we can proceed. We have a six o'clock public hearing continuation on an amended special permit for Figuera at 621 North Main Street. Unfortunately, we only have three members tonight and we need a supermajority to vote on a special permit. So we're going to need to continue this one. And I apologize to the applicant and anyone who showed up, but we really can't do anything on this because we don't have enough members present.
I think we need to repeat that to the two gentlemen that just entered.
Yes. I hate to say this, turn it down to you, but we only have three members tonight.
I'm sorry, what?
We only have three board members tonight. So we cannot act on the special permit, which requires a supermajority of four.
Right.
So we're going to continue it to March 6th at six o'clock.
Do you have any questions with respect to the permit now? We have a representative from GMRC here.
Yeah, I would rather not take testimony when we have two people not present because they, we haven't adopted the correct rule and therefore we would have to repeat the testimony at the next meeting anyway. I apologize for that, but...
Do you have any specific questions that you'd like us to be able to address at your next meeting?
Personally, I would like to hear that we have an agreement between the two parties that everybody thinks is fair, at which point I think we are likely to buy into it. I don't think we have any, I personally don't have any specific questions regarding what's being proposed. I just hope that we're presented with something that is solid so that...
We should be able to do that.
Yeah, so that we can just act on it.
If I could though.
Was there an issue with like a liquor license or something?
There was an issue with the timing, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the building, Michelle Sette Maria. The building inspector had informed me that until this permit goes through, that our other licenses could be affected by that by the end of February.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Our other licenses will be held up.
I have no, I have no, I have no, not before this board, so I have no idea with that.
But they cannot act on it tonight. It's not, they act on discretion.
How about our licenses?
They don't have anything to do with their licenses.
If you'd like, I mean, we can...
Licenses are not issued through this board.
Yeah.
You'd have to make inquiries.
You'd have to inquire of whoever issues the licenses, whether it's the Board of Selectmen, not the Board, the Town Council, the Town Council, or the Health Department, you know, the two licensing authorities that I'm aware of. But unfortunately, we don't have the members here, so we can't act.
My understanding is that the licenses that are issued by the council are resolved by the agreement that's been reached between the parties. So that should not be an issue going forward.
All right. I've just stayed, the last conversation that we had, he did tell me that if this was not resolved, it would affect our licenses in February. I just wanted to be clear with that, that's all.
We can talk outside, so we need to come to board's time.
And again, I apologize for the situation, but it happens. Currently it's school vacation week.
Okay, I'm sorry, the return date is?
Six, March 6th at 6:00 PM.
Very good.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's do the site plan waivers first, get those out of the way. First one would be for Frigos.
And what color tab would that be?
Green.
Green, okay, very good. Okay. East Long Meadow requests a waiver of site plan review. Property owner is Springfield, Mass. Municipal employees credit union. Owner's address is 1030 Wolverham Road, Springfield, Mass. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Frigo's Gourmet Foods. Owner of business is Joe Frigo. Business owner's address is 90 William Street, Springfield, Mass. Property address is 157 Shaker Road, East Long Meadow. Property district is industrial, it isn't allowed use. Proposed hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, eight to seven, Sunday nine to four. Number of employees, including the owner, per, six per shift. Date of last parking plan is June of 2004 and also February of 2018. Summary of business operation will be Italian grocery store offering catering services, gourmet food, sandwiches, and gift baskets. The application was not signed.
Yeah.
I understand Mr. Frigo is here so we can sign it.
Sure.
To make it correct.
His reference on it.
Yeah.
What was I saying?
Bottom of the first page.
Okay. So basically, they're expanding from where they are now into where the credit union was. Okay. The only question I have is the site, the plan that you're submitting shows a dining room with four tables and eight chairs. And my question is to the board, does this make this a restaurant? In which case, we need to, it should be under special permit. All right, have you discussed this with Mr. Frigo at all?
Yeah, we did talk about this, actually. We talked about it in terms of parking spaces and the like.
And with the building inspector as well.
Yeah.
And, I mean, my feeling, I mean, it's mostly a delicatessen and it has a few chairs, it has a few tables in there right now. But it's really, the restaurant is really an accessory use. It's for those...
I understand that we need to be careful about waiving the issue of special permit for restaurants.
The building inspector reviewed it.
Okay, and his...
And it's under his, that's his job.
Yes.
And he felt that that was okay.
That it was not a restaurant.
Correct. It was not a standalone restaurant.
Okay.
The vast majority of the use was as a deli, delicatessen retail sales.
Absolutely.
Okay.
But we did, but that was brought up.
Russ, any questions? No, fine.
No, in fact, there's no change to the outside, other than just moving the entrance.
Right.
And inside, we've added four tables with eight chairs, that's it, right?
Those tables are already...
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah.
So you've just moved them?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'm good.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan waiver request for Frigo's.
Do you have a second?
Second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, did that pass? Very good. Thank you for coming in.
In fact, the building inspector's zoning determination is on the back.
Oh, it is?
So that's on par.
Excellent. Okay, the next one is McGillicuddy, 28 Prins.
Okay, East Long Meadow requests a waiver of site plan review. Property owner is Hugh Martin, Wendy Martin.
What is this here? Wemecil?
Maybe.
LLC.
I think it's a Wemac M. LLC.
Okay, thank you. 38 Mill Street, East Long Meadow, Mass. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is 28 Prins. Owner of business is Sarah McGillicuddy. Business owner's address is 28 Gerald Avenue, East Long Meadow, Mass. Property address is 173B Shaker Road, East Long Meadow, Mass. The zoning and the allowed use has been left blank. Proposed hours of operation are nine to five. Number of employees, including the owner, are two. Date of last parking plan is November 2017. Summary of business operation is apparel sales, team sales, promotional sales, screen printing, embroidery services. The application has been signed and dated February 9th, 2018.
Okay, so this is going into the empty space next to the bait store that had been proposed for a different use prior to this.
It's a good location.
It's a good location, it's an allowed use in the district. Got a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan waiver request for McGillicuddy's at 173B Shaker Road.
And I will second that.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. That passes.
I will be your second man today.
Good luck.
I will be the second man today.
Yes, you will. Okay, Dreamscape Designs.
East Long Meadow requests a waiver of site plan review. Property owner is Anthony Bezel. 20 Somerset Street, East Long Meadow. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Dreamscape Design Landscaping. Owner of business is Marco Belice.
I think it's Basile.
Basile, Basile, excuse me. Business owner's address is 20 Somerset Street, East Long Meadow. Property address is 20 Somerset Street, East Long Meadow. Proposed hours of operation are 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Number of employees, including owner, is two. Native, date of last parking plan is not applicable. Summary of business is landscaping service, mowing, trimming, mulching, spring cleanups. Application was signed and dated February 7th, 2018.
Okay, is someone from Dreamscape here?
He couldn't make it, I talked to him today.
Okay. My concern with this one is that he's listing three commercial vehicles. And this is a Residence B district. So I would like to postpone this one until we have a chance to talk with Mr. Basile and determine whether he's actually going to have the vehicles, proposing to have the vehicles on site, or whether he's keeping them elsewhere and you just listed it that way. But I'd be reluctant to vote on this the way it's written. If it's a home office, then it's fine. If it's more than that, then we have an issue. So we'll pass on that one for the table for the time being. Last one.
All right. East Long Meadow requests a waiver of site plan review. Property owner is Hubert PB. 17 Dunmore Lane. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business are Metamotive Product Development. Owner of business is Hubert PB. Business owner's, excuse me? Business owner's address is 17 Dunmore, Dun, Dunmore Lane. Okay, I can see it now. Property address is 17 Dunmore Lane. The property district and allowed use has been left blank. Proposed hours of operation are 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Number of employees, including owner, is one. Date of last parking plan is nonapplicable. Summary of business is product development, computer design of products and prototypes. No commercial vehicles. The application was signed and dated February 6th, 2018.
Is anybody here from this, you come forward and talk to us a bit, tell us a little bit about what you're planning on doing?
It is...
Identify yourself, first of all.
Sorry, so, Hubert Fabé, go by Hugh.
Excuse me.
That's all right.
Have a seat.
And it is a product development business based out of my home office. Essentially, clients who have an idea for something and they want to have computer models made of it, that's what it is.
Okay, so you're not doing manufacturing?
The, not, I'm not doing manufacturing. The one thing I do is I do have a 3D printer that sometimes I'll print out little mockups for them to be able to kind of visualize what's, what's in the model.
But it's not, like, you're not going to have a whole bank of print, of 3D printers that are churning out product or stuff like that?
No.
Okay. That was all I wanted to have clarified. Any other questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to waive the site plan for Metamotive Product Development, 17 Dunmore Lane.
And I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. You're good. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the mixed-use development zoning bylaw discussion. And I'd like to preface this by saying that we have closed our hearing, the planning board has closed its hearing and sent its draft of the proposed bylaw to the council. The council has had some concerns and has asked the planning board to advise it as to potential amendments that the council might put in to the draft that we originally proposed. So we are not going to take any testimony. We are going to discuss the proposed changes as have been forwarded to us by the proponents for the, for the project in relation to the questions that were asked at the, at the council meeting. Couple of things, the main, major differences are that they strike the word flexible on the paragraph. Towards these ends, the planning board is authorized to apply design guidelines, dimensional regulations, and site standards to the review of site plans in the mixed-use district. The word flexible was struck out of that. Under applicability, they removed the clause that said that all uses permitted in the industrial garden park district under the zoning bylaw are permitted in the mixed district. That was removed. So the industrial garden park district uses will not be allowed in the mixed-use district. There's...
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Are we going to address each one as we go?
We will. I just wanted to go through them first so that we know what we're...
Well, I just want to clarify something. You said we're not going to take testimony, but they, at least the note we got back from maybe Larry or from the Town Council, they mentioned two individuals who had concerns and were at their meeting.
Right.
So are we going to be asked those individuals to fill it, fill us in more on what their concerns were?
No.
No?
Okay, we can't accept testimony.
This is, this is all a little awkward.
Yeah, it is, it is.
The planning board has held their public hearing. The planning board has closed their public hearing. The planning board has passed a recommendation on. The Town Council is now in the midst of their public hearing. Their public hearing is still ongoing. And the other thing is, you know, this is not the planning board's bylaw, this was a bylaw that was drafted and submitted by a proponent to which the planning board held a public hearing on and recommended in favor of. So a lot of the conversation and the questions that were raised were probably best apt discussed between the applicant and the council.
And the council.
And, and in fact, I think it might be appropriate if the board didn't want to participate that that should probably be done in the manner of the Town Council's public hearing process.
I was confused by it coming back to us.
So was I.
Because they have the ability to amend what we submitted to them.
Yes.
So I don't know why it's back in front of us.
I think the major issue, I mean, a lot of this is relatively small.
A lot of it is, yeah.
You know, the, the issue of 20 versus 40 acres, my understanding is the council is happy with 20 acres, but the applicant would acquiesce to 40 acres. That was just a question of whether they would divide the 40-acre parcel in two and potentially do two of these rather than one. You know, the point, my, my position is we can't foresee everything that's going to happen in the future, but we have to be reasonable in what we, what is recommended. The parking that was proposed changed to one space per bedroom, has been rescinded and they would like to stay with one and a half spaces per unit. Again, that's up to the council to decide whether or not that's sufficient. I think the major issue that I have heard from the council is whether this should be under special permit or whether it should be under site plan. As we recommended it, it was that it should be under special, under site plan, not special permit. Okay? The council has heard testimony from people who are concerned that that is, that site plan is not sufficient control. And I think the major thing that I would like to hear from my two fellow board members is where they're, they're coming from on, with regard to site plan versus special permit. And so that when, I will be at the Town Council meeting, I can provide them with testimony from what the board's thoughts are and why we recommended what we recommended. Would either of you would like to chime in and on that issue?
I'm fine with special permit. If they, if the Town Council wants special permit, I don't have a problem with that.
No.
May I add something?
Sure.
Okay. And this is something that's a little bit unique to, to East Long Meadow and the way you construct your bylaw, which is many communities, the way this would be handled. If you wanted a mixed-use development, it would be added a new table of use regulations as a principal use. Then you would go across and identify which of the zoning district you would want it permitted in and whether you, or not you would want it by right or by special permit. You go a little bit different in Italy in East Long Meadow and you've done it with golf courses, where you have a golf resort district. You've got it with, I think, senior housing, you've got it with a number of issues where you created a special zoning district for that particular use. And the rationalization or the reasoning that I was given, why you do it like that, is so that the Town Council, at the time it was Town Meeting, now it's Town Council, can in fact vote on each particular parcel that is going to be going into that particular zone. So you have a bylaw that lists all your dimensional design standards for it and your parking requirements and the like. And so when somebody comes in to create a mixed-use district, they're coming in requesting it for a specific parcel, which is the case here. And the Town Council is basically approving its own change to rezone that for that particular district, basically for that particular use. So by voting on it like that and approving it for the zone change, they are basically saying that's a, that parcel is good for that use. To have them come in and now have to go through a special permit again, once the zone change has been done, it's sort of like double jeopardy a little bit. It's making them kind of go through the same process twice where they're, where they're making the same determination each time. So that's the only reason I wonder why the special permit is necessary if in fact the council is voting on each particular parcel to include it in that district. And then you're still coming back and doing the site plan review to make, to see how it functions and how it works on the lot, but that just might do sense.
I mean, the, the point is, special permit allows you to put certain, additional conditions on a project.
And you can with site plan as well.
You can with site plan as well.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's one or the other. Personally, I don't care whether it's site plan or special permit. I prefer site plan because special permits are more difficult to amend, which means that every time something changes on a project, you've got to go through the whole hearing process.
That's true.
And it, it makes it a lot more difficult than site plan, which can be amended for minor things relatively easily.
Uh huh.
But, you know, it's up to the council to decide how much control they want.
Yep.
And I think that that's something that the proponents of this need to provide testimony to the council as to how that might impact a potential project. The thing that, that we need to keep in mind as we go forward here is that we, what we have here is a zoning bylaw. It is not a project that we're looking at. We're not looking at a specific proposed project. We're looking at creating a zone and putting regulations on that zone, okay? And specifying what that zone is all about. We're not talking about a specific project. Projects have been put forward and, and discussed in general terms, but we don't have a project on the table before us and neither does the council. What we have is a bylaw. And that's what we need to look at and...
So, so from a developer's point of view, and I'm not a developer here, although Ty wanted me to buy, buy the shopping center last week or the week before.
And you said no?
Uh huh. You know, a site, a site plan would be better, I think, for the developer because, you know, the minor issues, you can come in and resolve fairly quickly. But from the town, you make a change from a special, every change you make in a development has a rippling effect. And on a project this big, and I know we're dealing with a zone, but on a project this big, one small change could have a rippling effect with other things. So I think it's important to have another seven set of eyes look at that. So I would, I have no problem with the special permit if that's their desire to do so.
Yeah, I don't either.
Okay. As to the other changes in this, does any, you've had a chance to review them? Does anyone have any issues with them?
No, I'm fine with them.
No, they're fine.
Okay, so I, what I'm going to suggest is that...
Oh, I do wait, I do.
There was one inconsistency relative to the parking under 510.
Or you mean 1.5 versus?
Yeah, I mean, if they're going to go one, if they're going to go one per, it should be consistent because it shows up in two places.
Right.
So if they're changing in one spot, they need to change it in the other spot.
But I, you, didn't you just tell me that they, they came back and said they wanted to stay with 1.5?
Correct.
Okay, so...
And per unit, not bedroom.
Right.
So the other question I did have.
Yeah.
So the minimum lot area.
Yeah.
So I think we had 20.
Right.
And they're proposing 40.
Right. The Town Council is asking.
Right.
Yeah, they actually, the original proposal was for 40.
Yeah.
And then we had talked about reducing it to 20.
Because?
Because there were other lots in town, there were 20 acres that would be appropriate for something like this.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So why are we foreclosing the opportunity for other owners of a, of a 20-acre lot to be able to put something else like that in there?
The concern that was expressed at the council...
Because otherwise, we're almost doing spot zoning.
Well, the, the concern that was expressed at the council was that the 40-acre parcel could be split into two parcels and you could have a, since you're allowing a large commercial space in the zone, in a parcel that's in this zone, you could have two large commercial spaces rather than one. In other words, you could have two grocery stores rather than one, if you made two separate projects out of it.
But you could restrict that through special permit.
But just, and your, and your maximum coverage is going to, is going to control that. Because it's going to be 60% cut, maximum coverage, whether it's 20,000 or whether it's 40,000.
Right.
So I don't, so it seems like that's just, it's going to be consistent.
Yeah. Again, the 40, I have no problem, if the council wants to make it 40 acres, I have no problem with that.
Right.
And the proponent has no problem with that.
So if you're, well, if you're looking for our opinion, my opinion is it'd be 20.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Fine.
I'm fine with 20.
Okay. Yeah, I am too. I have no, no problem with that, but again, if the council decides that they want to do it differently, then I have, I'm not, it doesn't really bother me. No. One way or the other.
It's their choice.
Okay. So what I'm going to suggest is that I draft a letter to the council summarizing what we talked about tonight. And I will have Jennifer send this to the council, I'm sorry?
Jessica.
Jessica, I'm sorry, Jessica. Send this to the council as our, our position. And I will be there at the meeting to explain that and provide testimony if they need it. But it's really up to the council to decide what they want to amend and then to do the amendment, okay? That's, that's clear. Okay, thank you very much. We now have some minutes to go for.
So one thing that I didn't see on the agenda...
Yeah, something you tried to hear? Yeah. Fences.
No.
Okay.
So I thought we were going to talk about a proposal that was coming in front of, or went before the Town Council about parking commercial vehicles in driveways.
That hasn't come to...
It's a public hearing.
That's a public hearing.
It's coming up.
It will be coming up.
Well, just a little anecdotal.
Yeah.
I stood on my back porch, I looked, I could see six driveways.
Yeah.
I don't want six commercial vehicles, look, I don't want to be looking at six commercial vehicles. So then I went to my front porch, saw seven driveways. I don't want to see seven commercial vehicles.
So that's 13.
And then driveway, yeah, still.
Okay.
Well...
The, the only thing I would say about that hearing, not trying to prejudice it one way or the other, is that I certainly hope that anyone who has a strong opinion on this shows up and testifies at the hearing. Because I'm sure that the proponents of this change are going to show up. And if there are people who feel that this is not a good thing, I would urge them to show up as well so that we can get a balanced input on, on the hearing.
I've had a few in the office.
Yeah. Okay. Fences, we've been asked by the building inspector, I believe, to consider revising the zoning bylaw on fences because it conflicts with the state building code.
Right.[1785.41]
Okay? We're going to have to hold a public hearing on that?
Yes.
To make that happen? And do an agreement that we should take a look at this?
Sure.
Okay? So I'll ask Jessica and Larry to schedule a public hearing on this, and we will consider it. The, the issue in the past has been, we've asked, we've required the, the building permit to make sure that the fences were in fact in compliance with the zoning bylaw, which has certain setbacks on fences and certain requirements for fences inside yards and in front of the house and that sort of thing. So we need to think about how that control will continue to be there if there's no building permit required.
There would still be a zoning permit required.
No, not a, no zoning permit.
Zoning determination.
If someone doesn't need a building permit, they can put up a fence, and then if someone would have to complain that the fence was in violation.
Yeah.
For that to happen, for that to be looked at by the building inspector. Okay?
Unless you require that it, they have to get a zoning determination.
We could include that in the bylaw.
Yeah.
We need to think about that.
Yeah, you do. There's also one other thing, it's under fences and walls.
Yeah.
E. All other fences must be at least six inches from any lot line.
Right.
So if I put up a fence on my property, and my neighbor puts up a fence on his or her property, there's going to be 12-inch.
Yes.
Gap between them.
Yes.
Running down.
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's, that's not widening for my lawnmower, George.
You put, you put packing sanders in there.
Oh, okay.
Comes with the goat.
Okay. Anyway, just something to think about.
That, that has been on the books for decades.
I know, but a lot of towns have gotten rid of that, just because of that.
But, but you understand the issue.
Yes.
Nobody knows where their lot line is.
Well, see, well, it's that, and they also want to give you enough space to paint your side of the fence, the outside of the fence without trespassing, but I'm not sure that 's ever.
And nobody's going to hire a surveyor just to put a fence up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, then, well, how do you know six inches off then?
It's at least six inches off.
I think you have the same issue, George.
You can put it three feet off. Okay, we have minutes finally to look at. Has everyone had a chance to look over the minutes?
I only have one, just one really tiny, and I can't find it, but I'll.
I, I have two, actually.
One is where we, I had asked for an update on the lawsuit by Pride, or by, yeah, Pride.
Which media were you talking about?
I can't remember which one that is, quite honestly.
Okay.
You put loss, you put lawsuit with an E, suit with an E, it's really not an E.
Sweet?
A sweet, a lot of sweet?
Okay.
And other than that, I was okay.
Okay. On February 6th, the third waiver says South Main Street in two places. It should be, I believe, North Main Street?
Okay.
We don't have a South Main Street in town.
We do now.
We used to.
But back.
It became Summers, it became Summers Road. So that should, I believe that should be North Main Street.
Okay.
Okay? Other than that, have no problems with February 6th.
Can I make a motion?
Please.
So I'm going to make a, do you have other concerns that you noticed?
None on February 6th.
Oh, I was going to do all of them at one time.
Oh, okay, I have one other minor one on, where was it?
Yeah, I forgot about this one.
Which one?
My name's spelled wrong.
Oh, we need that, we need to fix that.
September 19th.
There it is.
Kind of stood out in front of me there.
It was one of the, oh.
I get to be Jennifer, you get to be five of them.
That's true, with an I.
On October 3rd.
Gets rid of that ring around the collar, though.
Yeah, I've heard it all.
On October 3rd, the first public hearing, NG Advantage, third paragraph, sixth line, it says unanimously to rescind, that should be rescind, S-C-I-N-D.
Yes.
Okay? Minor thing, but it, because that's a vote, it has to be accurate.
I, I, these were not amended.
Oh, I know, I'm just, I'm not meaning on you, I'm just.
The previous administration.
I have no other issues with the minutes, do you, Ty?
I don't.
So I would like.
Because this was also.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion that we vote to approve the following minutes. Minutes of September 5, 2017, September 19, 2017, October 3, 2017, October 17, 2017, and February 6, 2018, with grateful gratitude for Jessica.
I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so those are all finally done.
Now, do you want me to, two of these do not have the word "draft" on them, you want me to sign these?
Uh, yeah, they don't have the draft on them, you can sign them. And we can sign the other one at the next meeting. Or you can, you can sign it, and Jessica can remove, can reprint the first page without the word "draft" on it.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Okay?
And make the spelling errors.
Absolutely.